Go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session of Thursday, November fourteenth, 2024, at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. The first item we have is Citizens Comments. The local number is 907-486-3231. The toll-free number is 855-492-9202. Anybody wishing to come forward or call in, please do it this time.
Yeah, my name is Fred Roberts. I'm with the Bayview Road Service area. We've had, well, I guess today we should have results from our recent RFP for road service and hope to have that activated soon because there's some snow and ice in the forecast. We'd like to prevent this last-minute process in the future, and I ask that the road service areas be incorporated into the process of writing and putting out these requests for proposals and requests for quotes for road service area. Each road service area has a few little peculiarities that differ from one another, so the language that could be in those can be fine-tuned, and so we won't have to issue addendums or have to redo it or something like that. And I understand that there is some state regulations that the borough must follow when issuing these types of contracts, and we'd like to be aware of what these are, maybe provide us with where we could see these regulations so that we could get a better understanding of the process and what's going on.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments, please come forward at this time.
I'm Patrick Dusterlow. I appreciate all that you guys do. You guys have a very hard job. Forgive me, I'm just scanning through the hydrology study RFP that I see here, which is going to be hopefully a really useful tool. And forgive me, I'm just scanning it now, and I see that we're using, or at least is proposing to use, a HEKRAZ software, which I believe is Army Corps of Engineers, and I also believe it's free. And it looks to me, and as I recall, not that difficult to operate at all. And where I'm going with this, it looks like they are going to do a complete hydraulic and complete study delineating watersheds, et cetera, et cetera, and creating a model to do some predictions here. I'm hoping that one of the deliverables in here somewhere is that model, since it is open-source software, all the raw data, if it's already being input, should be just a digital, here you go. And the reason I'm saying that is because it can be a really, really powerful tool for doing future planning. It has been incredibly useful, for example, on the Coast Guard base, working up a water model to see what would happen if a pipe goes here, or something happened here, or we want to add a building here, or all that stuff. I don't think it would take that much to reperform our own analysis somehow, since it's already being created, not have to create the wheel at some point down the road. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Anyone else wishing to come forward under Citizens Comments? Any calls? None, okay. Go ahead.
We're now answering a call from the queue.
Assembly meeting, you're on the air. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, that's Patrick Adonan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, good evening. Patrick Adonan, Chair of Minas Gukel Road Service. I think it was spoken to earlier of our concerns out here between Bayview and Minas Gukel Road Service area. The weather's turning cold here, and predictions for snow. We have a storm moving in here. I'm a little frustrated that things went the way they went, and that this particular agenda was not taken up at this special meeting, because I think it is special circumstances. And we're getting late in the year here, so as you all know, it doesn't take much snow to bring everything to a screeching halt around here, and with Mount Udriv and Three Sisters and Marmot, you have some steep holes there, and things could turn nasty and become a bit of a disaster for the people living out here. So I just want you to prioritize with the borough there in getting services established for Bayview and Minas Gukel Road Service, and then working closer with the chairs and members of boards out here in the future, so that we're all on the same page and up to speed on what's going on and getting things done in a timely fashion moving forward, rather than being in the situation we're in this year. So, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Patty. Anyone else wishing to speak? Joe?
Oh, Joseph Delgado. I'm Huitik Sukpiaq. First of all, welcome to our land for doing your business. I hope that it's treating you well. I hope you treat our land as well. To Alaska Native people, governance has always been about harmony with the land, waters, and animals we depend on. Our ancestors practiced sustainable resource management for thousands of years, respecting natural cycles and ensuring that fish, wildlife, and habitats would thrive for future generations. This relationship is deeply woven into our culture, values, and survival. However, this balance has been disrupted when European settlers arrived. Control over land and resource management shifted from Native communities to external authorities who prioritize commercial gains over environmental stewardship. As regulations moved away from Indigenous governments, traditional knowledge was disregarded, and a large-scale commercial interest often took its precedence. Decisions were now made by those without a stake in the long-term health in these ecosystems or an understanding of the values we hold. Today, the impact is clear. Fish stocks are declining, some are close to collapse. Resource management policies continue to favor commercial operations, making it harder for Native communities to uphold our traditional ways, protect our environment, and ensure the survival of the resource that sustain us. What we seek is governance that includes Indigenous voices and respects our traditional knowledge. By involving Native people in resource management decisions, we can make or bring forward practices rooted in sustainability and responsibility. Together, we can restore balance to Alaska's ecosystems, honoring the land and waters that have sustained us through generations, and ensuring they'll continue to do so for generations to come. With the recent election results, we have more and more Drill Baby Drill-type people in power. And what's happened with the salmon, the king salmon, draggers, and they're taking all that out, it's only going to get worse. People are only looking at money. Listen to the Native people. We know that if we can get a seat on the Borough Assembly, on all these city organizations, we can bring a lot of knowledge. I think that if we open up the assembly to Native people in the villages, knowing already that Zoom works, we might get better participation. I think that we need to make a bigger effort at recruiting these people from the villages. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else wishing to speak under Citizens Comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda items. First one is presentation from Borough lobbyist Mark Hickey. And Amy, I'll let you proceed with the introduction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor in Assembly. This is Mr. Mark Hickey. He is our state lobbyist who has traveled to us from Juneau via Cold Bay. And so he's here to talk about legislative priorities, what he thinks might be the focus this year. He's also received a copy of the Planning and Zoning CIP list that was passed, and he's going to speak to some of those issues as they will apply to this year's legislative session.
Well, thank you, and good evening. Always enjoy coming out. Nice to see so many familiar faces. I was trying to think while I was sitting there, this may be the 25th trip coming out, so probably time to retire me, maybe. There's a report in your packet, and I wanted to hit some highlights. Am I coming through okay on the mic?
Might pull it forward a little bit.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
There.
I'm going to hit some highlights and not go through every point, but happy to speak to any questions you might have. I just want to start with the recent election as it relates to the state legislature, and most of this you will know, particularly since your two Kodiak legislators are likely going to have prominent roles the next two years in the legislature. Senate has organized, Gary Stevens is Senate President again. It's the bipartisan coalition. They may be down a couple of members, so instead of 17, they'll be 15. But on that side, the Senate side, their priorities of working on education funding, resource development, staying away from social issues where they can bog down in debates that sometimes are certainly less important from their perspective than the things that we need to do for the state. So the Senate should be fairly stable. House is a little less clear. There's at least one very close race, 19 votes apart in Anchorage, that won't get resolved till later in the year, in the month. And then there are at least a couple races where ranked choice voting is going to play an important role, and we've got three or four people that all are in the neighborhood of 20% to 30% or 40% vote. So it's pretty hard to know how that's going to come out until they go through that process on November 20th. But there was an announcement that the House Majority Coalition has organized. This is the group that was in power for four years prior to the last two. It's dominated by Democrats, independents, and a couple Republicans. Bryce Edgeman would go back as Speaker from Dillingham. Louise Stutes would be the Rules Chair, and Chuck Kopp, Republican out of Anchorage, who's a former legislator, coming back, would be the Majority Leader. That, we'll see. If I had to predict, it's more likely they will end up in power, but depending on those races, we could see what we saw four years ago, where they spend a month before they can even organize the House. I hope that's not the case, but we'll see. Moving to the budget outlook, I put a little information about where we're standing in the current fiscal year, which is FY '25. And the legislature, the spring forecast called for $78 a barrel for the price for this budget, and that's the budget the legislature, that's the number they built their budget on. First two months of this fiscal year, prices were above that. Last two months, that's not been the case. So we'll see how it goes between now and the end of June, but prices continue to stay below $78 a barrel, then they're going to have a deficit for the current year before they even get to next year's budget. And then on top of that, production has, they also project production levels, and until recently, they were below what they had projected. Now they're above what they projected. So if you had to handicap it, we're likely to see a tighter budget environment for even the current fiscal year, and then if the projections are a lower price of oil going into the '26, which is the year, the budget they'll be working on, then we're going to see potentially pressure on cuts, pressure on things possibly including school debt reimbursement, not, of things that they've looked at. My view is that's less likely that one will be in danger. But if the money's not there, the pressure is on them to look for reductions, and they can look for a lower permit fund dividend, but typically you can count on a dividend that's probably going to be at least $1,000 or $1,100. So it's one of these things where, at the end of the day, they figure out the dividend, they look at the revenue, and then they size state government capital budget operating based on what's left. At least that's how we've been doing it for too many years. Moving on to education, base student allocation, that's going to continue, increase, going to continue to get a lot of attention. Both the Senate majority and the House majority, if it turns out to be one led by Bryce Edgeman, fully support a permanent increase, a substantial increase. They passed the biggest increase that we've seen in years, $680 to the formula. That's the bill the governor vetoed, and that's the bill that failed to override the veto by one vote. And there's no way to know what kind of reaction the governor's going to have, but if the organizations hold the way they are right now, I think you'll see pretty quick action on bringing back the increase in the base student allocation. In fact, I was on a call today with some folks, and they're back talking about inflation-proofing the formula, which would be very helpful and something that, you know, would have been great to do many years ago. There's a lot of concern about the fiscal impact of that with some of the legislators that have been around a long time. So I, they'll debate it, but I suspect inflation-proofing is not likely, but they will be talking about it. But I do think you'll see a bill for a permanent increase. School debt reimbursement, I'm fairly comfortable the governor won't, he's gotten away from actions in the past where he reduced it or didn't fund it. Last year, it was fully funded in his budget, and that's what the legislature did. And even the year before, they did a makeup for some of the prior years. So I always say predicting the legislature, it's a dangerous thing to do, but I think that's one that is likely to, they'll leave alone. There is an issue that the Board of Education, it's in the report, that they're looking to restructure the formula for what counts towards the cap or doesn't count towards the cap for local contribution. And if they do this, it really won't affect districts unless you're already at the cap. I should have checked. I don't think Kodiak is quite at the cap, but yeah. But there are things that districts do, transportation, school activities, preschool, those kind of additions that right now are not, they're allowed to fund with local money without it having to count against the cap. And these regs that they're looking at doing would change that. So I'll keep an eye on that and let Amy know what's going on, but they haven't, the board's going to meet next month and decide whether to put this out for a public review process. Other budget challenges, they're kind of the same list that we've been seeing in the past. The one I want to highlight is the defined benefit plan discussion. That got a lot of attention this last two years, and the Senate passed, the first time a bill's been passed, and we switched from defined benefit, I think 18 years ago, and there's been one time where a bill to reinstate defined benefit passed, and last year was the second time. And the plan that they have is not to return to what was there. It's a more modest system. It's got a lot more levers in it to share risk with the employees, retirees, depending on funding levels. But both coalition, the Senate coalition, supported doing it, and the members of the new House organization supported it. It didn't pass the House. We have no idea what the governor will do with it, but that, I think, is something that is going to get additional attention, and I think, I know AML has been involved in looking at that, and happy to help provide information on what that might look like in terms of impact to the borough and the school district for public employees and school district employees. And there's been a lot of actuarial work done. It seems like every time there's a new one, it's got a different answer. But there's been a concerted effort to design something that is affordable and the risk can be managed to avoid the unfunded liability problem that created back 20 years ago. And the whole purpose of this is a retention problem, the retention problem with teachers, particularly in the rural areas. Turnover in the rural areas is like 25% a year. Generally, law enforcement, a very difficult time of bringing people in, and I know from my work with DOT, the ability to, they're generally getting new engineers in, but they're not retaining them. They get the experience under the current system. You put in five years, you can leave. You take the state contribution and your contribution to defined contribution. And like in education, we're the only state where you don't, where teachers don't have either a pension or Social Security. And there's a long story why they don't have Social Security, but teachers have and are relocating to other states where they've got a better opportunity for retirement. And it's not something that new teachers look at, but as they go through their career, they start looking at it. So that's going to get, I think, a lot of attention. I'm going to move on just briefly to DOT and then end. Testamena Replacement Project, it's delayed again, surprise. I will say that the new director is the best thing that's happened to Marine Highways in a long time. He's very capable. It came out of the private sector. They just put out a draft long-range plan, and it's, I'm still going through it, but it's thoughtful, it's focused, it's based on a real understanding of the challenges the system's facing. And he's taken over the Testamena Replacement Project, and I think they've had problems getting the authority on the federal side to proceed with the vessel construction. They expect to have that authority by the end of this year, and they'll have that out to bid. But now, instead of '27 or '28, a vessel would be done in '28, '29, but probably doesn't go into operation until '30. So by that time, what's '63, that's going to be 67-year-old Testamena?
Mark, Scott, and then Ryan have a couple of questions for you.
Trump announced today that his pick for Interior is Doug Burgum from North Dakota. There was quite a lot of talk about Don Levy having that position. Is this going to change stuff in terms of state politics?
Well, yeah, there was a lot of information. I probably may have heard the governor two days ago announced that he and the Lieutenant Governor were going on Facebook that night to talk, and they canceled that. The speculation was, there was a serious interest in having him be the Interior Secretary. Obviously, that's not happening. There's still talk about taking the Energy Department. So I think you have to wait and see how that plays out. And obviously, the governor were to go to Washington, Lieutenant Governor then steps in. And Lieutenant Governor Dahlstrom is a known commodity. I mean, she was a good legislator that many of us have worked with. No state government, it's known by legislators, has a, I think, a better handle on, a good handle, I'll say, on how to work in the legislative process. So I think a lot of people would tell you, in terms of trying to do some things that we need to do, it would be a more collaborative process than we've had, but I have no way of knowing how that's going to turn out.
Thank you.
Ryan?
I'll wait until the end after the report's finished, but I do have a question for you. Thank you.
Sure. And I was really about to end, at the end. The last section is about DOT and its projects. I try to keep track of that, and I know Amy and Dave and her people are on top of what is going on with these projects, but it's helpful for me just to know what is happening. And generally, you're seeing, and it's not just Kodiak, I work with communities in South Coast and other locations, delays. There's different reasons, problems with development, ride-away challenges, environmental, the PFAS issue, slowed down the fencing project at the airport, which has now been awarded in the first phase of the big project at the apron and taxiway for the, or runway taxiway at the airport, and that's ultimately going to be three phases. That's been awarded. There was some thought that would actually start, and I think they might have even been out and talked to the project manager about that, and they had to stop until next year because they ran into some environmental issues on the apron, and the project manager thinks they've got that under control. I'm going to get a little more information about what that is. But as a general matter, we're just seeing these projects not happening based on the schedule, and all I can say is it's not just Kodiak. Staffing, they continue to have problems getting people, keeping people, the consultants continue, there's a lot of money out there. They have a lot of problems handling the workload. I still think we've got with South Coast management and the people that are overseeing this, competent people that are very capable of doing the work, it's just frustrating that the schedules slip. But we are seeing projects awarded, just not based on the schedule that, you know, we anticipated. So I'm happy to talk about any of the projects, but otherwise, I'll stop and answer questions.
Ryan?
Ryan?
Thank you. So I understand that as a lobbyist, you represent the borough in a political manner in Juneau, representing the needs of the community. I'm wondering if I could ask a very large favor that would make this community extremely pleased. Leveraging your experience as the former DOT Commissioner, we have a significant problem parking at the airport, and it is mismanaged at best. It's abused, and it's creating a dynamic that I believe will ultimately impact what we're trying to do with economic development, tourism, and even general commuting becomes difficult. So I was wondering if it's not out of scope or out of line, if you could help assist with that?
Second?
As a, everybody does this job. Nobody grows up saying when they were a kid, "I want to grow up to be a lobbyist." And yeah, I know the system. I know how to advocate. You have to understand politics, but I've always been a results-oriented person, and I feel that, and we've done this in the past, if there's something I can help with like that, that's part of what I can bring to it. I have that expertise. Funny, I'm not funny, but I've been watching that for some time, and today I couldn't find my rental car because it was parked not where they were supposed to be, and I have to go back and look at some notes because this, you know, there've been different conversations about this in the past. So without going into more of it, I'm happy to do what I can to get involved. It's the state that's setting up and managing what's happening for parking?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I do think South Coast, or not, and when you said abuse, so you've got people that are just leaving their cars out there and, you know, because there's a two-hour parking area, right? But it's maybe not, anyways, I'd be happy to see.
Thank you. Multiple forms of abuse in every facet.
Yeah, I'm going to be here tomorrow. I can probably get a little better idea, but yeah, and I have noticed that there's a lot more cars every time I come, it seems like.
Yeah, basically, yourself, Ryan, and I came in, and you notice there was no two-hour parking period available, and that's, and the plane wasn't but half-full. So it's a problem. People are parking there long-term in the short-term area because there's no People are parking there long-term in the short-term area because there's no enforcement.
Yeah, I didn't notice that. I just knew I couldn't find my rental car.
Bo?
I think I'll add too that a lot of abandoned vehicles out there. That's becoming a problem. Thanks for coming. I have a question. Do you happen to have any information regarding, I know it's fairly, it was fairly recent decision, but do we have any information available for the Anton Larson Dock Project to move it to the end of the road so we get better, improved access for the villages in the winter?
I don't have anything new on that. I can look into it. I've been involved and aware and I actually didn't know. I was out of state a little bit in September and October. I'll have to find out what, what happened. And I don't have anything. And this is to do the road extension?
Yes, or to extend it out so they can move the dock out, out beyond the lagoon there.
Yeah, I mean, I've been involved in that in terms of, I mean, even as commissioner, in the late 80s, we were out there looking at things that could be done. And the project has always made a lot of sense to me that Duncan Fields and the folks have been working on. What's the challenge is figuring out the, the funding and, I mean, to build it. And then, of course, getting it maintained. But I'll, I'll check. So there's a decision of some nature that's occurred? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other, Jared?
Hi, yes, I have a, a couple of things in regards to the, into Deeds' proposal to look at, or tightening up the cap on local contribution. So this is coming from the, it's coming from Deeds, so the governor, the governor is behind this. Do you get a sense that he's going to use this as some, some sort of bargaining chip with the, you know, increase to the SBA? I can, I can see something like that happening.
I think that's possible. And you may have followed, and it's on the report, I didn't cover it because it doesn't impact Kodiak today, but they've been tussling over this debate, Department of Education State with the federal over not properly using COVID money. And there's like 70 and a half million that is now being withheld from federal money coming to the state for education. And the state's position just continues to appeal and fight it. And I think we're the only state in the nation facing this now. And I just bring that up, even though Kodiak's not one of the five that's listed as having been short-changed, is it's, it is indicative of a sort of an approach that's confrontational in the department. And, and, you know, we've seen other things with some of the regulation changes that they've been pursuing, the, the, separate from money. But I think this is a, on the face of it, it's, it's an attempt to reduce the obligation that the state, potentially the state is paying and could be a bargaining chip in the BSA discussion. Hasn't been discussed that way. This is new. The governor's main contention that was the reason for, well, the stated reason for the veto was we didn't, they didn't do enough to allow charter school creation. And they had this whole fight about letting, excuse me, letting the state make the decision rather than local control, which is pretty ironic since the, you know, this governor and generally, there's, not to get political about it, but a lot of emphasis on how important local control is. But I guess only when decisions are being made that people like, I don't know. But I think we'll see more debate again about the charter school question and correspondence study program and the, the whole debate that is still unresolved about using the charter, the correspondence money for tuition at private schools, which has been in the courts. But that, I'll be watching this and if I learn more, I'll pass it on.
Okay. One more.
Go ahead, Jared.
You spoke about state regulations. I'm assuming you're familiar with the recent Chevron Supreme Court decision. This is more on the federal level.
Chevron Department?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not actually.
So if I'm paraphrasing correctly, I still have a little bit of like brain fog right now. Is the Supreme Court ruled that, in a sense that federal regulations or regulations created by federal departments can be challenged in court? And, and that the judge would decide on the regulation to accept, deny, or revise? And, which has its benefits and its consequences too. Instead of, right, the, the department being the, the final say on whatever, however to interpret the rule or regulation is, or what the rule or regulation is. So I'm a little concerned on how that's going to trickle down into some of our state departments. We had a citizen commenting earlier about natural resources, you know, those regulations that have protections for natural resources and environmental protections and, you know, all sorts of other things. So I know there's nothing really, there's nothing hot button right now, but I think I'd like you to keep an eye, if you hear anything from, from departments. I think I would be interested in, in hearing that the governor, the governor's office is going to pursue challenging more regulations that might affect our community.
Sure. And I, as you went through it, I have read a little bit about at least some of the facts related to, to this. I'll look into it a little more. Not a lawyer, but it seems like ultimately, the regulations are based on statutory authority and there should be, you know, Supreme Court's saying, well, no, the judges can sort of do what they want. Then, then what? Because up to now, you can challenge regs if they're improper application of the statutory authority, but generally, it's not up, not been up to judges to decide what they think they ought to be versus what the, the authority of that federal agency. I mean, we're going to see a lot of this, but yeah, gotcha. And you're particularly focused on state-level actions that look like this, walk like this?
I, I think so. I think, we, I think even, you know, now, now more than ever, we want to keep an eye on what the state is doing on that regulatory legal side to make sure that, you know, our community is protected from however the, the executive administration is interpreting these regulations.
You bet.
Bo?
Hey, and just a, a small expansion on, on what Mr. Griffin pointed out is, is the, the case that, that was referenced recently was the, regarding the North, North Pacific Observer Program. So that could have set precedent and have an impact if we're downstream of that decision here. It's been made clear that both municipalities and the state want to continue supporting funding for the North Pacific Groundfish Observer Program. And so that could have a downstream impact on that program and, and the data products they provide our managers here.
Okay.
Any other question, questions or discussion? Mark, one thing I would, would ask is kind of your synopsis, we haven't seen much in the way of capital project in the legislature. And I'm anticipating the same. What's your take?
Well, last year is the, yeah, I mean, last year is the first year in many years that we did see some discretionary, where legislators in the majority were allowed to put some projects in, but not very much money. Nothing like the days where they were getting to 5 million each or, you know, 10 million each. I still remember when I was commissioner, a hearing where somebody, Senate Finance said, are you sure that's enough money you need? You need more? Anyways, I think that the budget situation that's still there with inability to figure out how to set the dividend in an affordable way, as long as that continues, we're then left with, as I said earlier, looking at production, price, price oil, revenue from that. And government gets sized more or less. I mean, yeah, we've gotten away from the statutory formula for the dividend because that's absolutely unaffordable, but we haven't resolved how to get out of the annual debate of what it should be. And on top of that, no real interest in the collective will to go into revenue measures, taxes. And, and so as long as that continues, unless there's a big windfall from new, new production, and there is some on the horizon, much higher prices, the ability to do discretionary capital isn't going to, I don't think it's going to be there. Now, there's still opportunity to work around the edges on using the programs that are there, everything. I mean, you've got on your capital list, when you talk later, number of projects that should be eligible for village safe water in the villages. And I've got some other thoughts about some of the other projects. But the, the ability to go get state general fund in any, any magnitude for projects isn't there and isn't going to be there in the foreseeable future, absent one of the changes I talked about. I don't think.
Thank you. Thank you. Amy, any questions, discussion you'd like to continue with?
No, I, the only question I have, Mark, is the, the DOT said that they're going to come out with a new classification system for roads based on their length, how much they're used, how many people they serve. Do you think we're going to see any change in our project priorities for Kodiak based on that new system?
The short answer is I don't know. I need to find out what they're talking about. I kind of smile because this has been a debate for a long, long time and we still, I mean, there's a lot of roads around the state that, in any other state with no allocating maintenance resources. But they're already using classification as a criteria in their evaluation for projects that, on scoring. So the, the main road system, the connected road system, major airport to town roads, they are in a class that gets higher priority already. But it's possible, it's in federal aviation and the spending, because they're spending almost entirely that money. So if they all of a sudden decide to do something different than their system plans already call for, that, there are some constraints on them. You saw that with the STIP problem where, and whether this was from the governor, I don't know, but they, they didn't follow the AMAS and FMAS, Anchorage and Fairbanks planning process, and they left projects out in order to fund other projects. And federal highway said, no, can't do that. And that's why, one of the reasons they couldn't get the STIP approved. But I, I'll find, I, yeah, I left a month, I shouldn't have done that. There's all these things I don't know. Behind.
So, thank you, Mark. Any other discussion or questions? Last call.
I'll be here.
Thank you.
Any questions on the capital. Again, nice to see you all. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is update on the hydrology and hydraulic study. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you may remember, this has already been, like, I've already signed the contract. River Focus was here last week. We had a public meeting out at Women's Bay Fire Hall on Tuesday night where we had all sorts of people from the community to come out, people who have been out there for 60 years and told us the history of how those riverbeds were used in World War II, how all the gravel came out, how the Navy used to take gravel out every two years to keep those flowing. And now it's been decades since that has happened and we're seeing the repercussions of that. So it was fascinating learning the history. The people from River Focus were there to learn about all of that and kind of understand why we're in the position that we're in right now. In your packet tonight, you have a letter from a resident who lives on the dark side, on my side of the flats, along the Russian River, explaining the situation that they're in with their property. They're actually here in the audience tonight as well. And there's several stories like this that we've been hearing about, about how people wanted to bring those kind of stories to light. So we knew that the assembly knew that those were the concerns that borough residents were facing. And then we have two people here, if you have questions. Dave Conrad, who's lived in the flats for the last 37 years and has watched those rivers change positions. Over that time, he has a lot of really good historical knowledge, if you have any questions. And then Chris French is here in the event that you have any questions about the actual study. I think the study went very well. They got to see all the weather patterns. There was actually too much water flowing through the Russian side to get accurate readings, but they left stuff, like equipment behind and taught James Dixon how to use it. So when that river slows down, he's going to be able to go take those readings of the Russian. So we're learning all kinds of new skills. And so we learned a lot from them and they handled that discussion really well. I don't know. Chris, did I, did I say everything that happened? Okay, good. So if you have historical questions, Dave is here. Mostly, we wanted you just to be aware that it's an ongoing problem in the flats. I know that we've said several times about the flooding on the interest to the Sergeant Creek's side, and we've shown pictures and we talk about that a lot. But there's also concerns on the other side with erosion. So as that family is working with the Army Corps of Engineers, we just want to make sure the assembly is aware of what's happening on both sides.
Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you. We did have a question from a citizen this, this evening, and I'd actually be curious to know the answer as well. When we commission a study and we pay for the data, do we get the data files?
I, I think that they're an open book at this point. We, we get everything. So, Chris, I don't know if you have any more detailed information about that?
Yes, the contract does state they will get all the information from the study. That would include the modeling aspect as well. I'll stay here in case you have more.
Any other questions?
I'll wait till Chris walks back from the desk.
Okay. Anything else, Amy? Right now? Okay. Then we'll go ahead and move on to the next, which is discuss amendments to Kodiak Island Borough Code 2.30.070 M3 to require assembly members to file a reconsideration to provide reasons at the time of filing. Staff report, Nova?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly, this item on the agenda was requested by Assembly Member Whiteside and Assembly Member Sharrett. Excuse me. They have asked staff to draft an ordinance to modify the code, which pertains to reconsiderations by requiring filers to provide the reasons for reconsideration at the time of filing. So there's a draft ordinance or code amendment before you. Our code says that assembly members can sponsor an ordinance and it shall be placed on the agenda, and that's also in Alaska statutes. So this is up for discussion of the assembly on what you would like to do with it.
Thank you.
Discussion. Bo, would you like to take it first?
Sure, thank you. And thank you, Nova, for the help with this. We appreciate it. This is simply to continue to advocate for transparency in government. And I think we should have all information available at the time of reconsideration or filing for reconsideration. That way, when the assembly takes a matter up again, we have all information available. And this will, again, promote transparency in government. It shows, it encourages trust amongst the assembly and that there won't be any information hoarding from each other. So I think this is the right thing to do. It's more of a housekeeping measure, in my opinion. But anything we can do to be more transparent in our discussions and decision-making, I would support that.
Ryan?
Thank you. I will echo the intent of this for transparency. And I guess expand on that a little bit with the silos that I believe exist at the assembly level, current and previous, that when information is gained in external sources, it's almost like it's a bargaining chip. And this is a measure that we're trying to create an opportunity for the assembly to understand the full picture before we get blindsided by it. There was a case that this was promulgated against. And so again, this is, as Mr. Whiteside said, this is for transparency. So I did second position this and support this to bring it before the assembly tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion? Jared?
I'm in favor of this too, and not because of past.
Um, uh, I'm in favor of this too, and um not because of um past uh past practice, um but I think the merits of it are valid in that, um, yeah, I I do think that assembly members should be um informed before uh before any agenda item comes up, especially a motion to reconsider. Um, I don't, um, I probably won't object to uh the word um reasons, but um for me, it's less reasons and I guess information or or narrative. Um, uh, that should get, that should go along. Um, but uh I don't know if I'm going to make an amendment or propose an amendment to 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 change that word, reasons. Um, uh, I wonder if there's just a a better term to ask for it, because what we want is, right, substantive information before we're we're, we have to discuss something. So um, uh, I just wonder if we can get to something more substantive there. But other than that, I I I I support this on the merits.
Scott?
I don't have any problem with this. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan?
I actually uh support that uh change from reasons to narrative, because as I read through the proposed language, reasons could be as simple as three bulleted items. Uh, whereas if a narrative is requested, I think we can get more substantial information. Uh, specifically intent. So, thank you.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm new, so I don't have, I mean, I listen to the meetings, obviously, but uh so I kind of have an outsider's perspective on on some of these things. But I support the idea, and I do like the the concept of a narrative versus reasons. I quickly Googled um Governor Dunleavy's last batch of vetoes, and his reason provided was to pervert, preserve fiscal stability. So if that's, you know, who gets to be the arbiter of reasons? And I think that would be my concern with it is um trying to legislate good governance is very difficult, if not impossible. And so I will, yeah, I support it, but also I recognize that um it takes the collective will of the group to have the discussion in the open entirely um to make it work. Um, no amount of of rulemaking is going to fix that if there's not a concerted effort on all of our parts to to reserve the conversations for the meetings.
Bo?
Thank you. I just uh want to echo the sentiment, and I would support uh uh modification or or an amendment to update that language. Um, and I would lean on Mr. Griffin to to guide us along the way with his skill set.
One of the things that I'll say too, when you've got basically till five o'clock the next day to move for reconsideration. And sometimes your thoughts aren't complete, and you have time to get that after. But you have to get basically moved and seconded to get that reconsideration considered by the end of the next business day. So I can see where sometimes, you know, you're, it's not gonna be as thorough, and I don't, as Dave said, I agree. You know, sometimes it's a little more general than we may like, but the facts come out in the end on there. That's the in, the intent. But I understand it both ways. And I think it, there needs to be some leeway. Any further discussion? Nova?
Mr. Mayor, um, and members of the assembly, timeline unwise, we need to place this on the agenda because of the request. We have 60-day timeframe. And um, would you like this introduced at the next meeting?
I've seen four heads.
Okay, we'll add it. Thank you.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Ryan?
Yeah, just real quick, before we add it, though, we do want to change reasons to narrative.
Yes, got it. And I'll send a a proof to Assembly Member Griffin if you'd like to review it first before I place it on the agenda. Thank you.
All righty. Moving on to the, oh, I'm sorry, Bo.
Sorry, I just wanted to comment. Um, I'm I'm comfortable, I won't be here next week, but I'm, I'm comfortable with folks um speaking on behalf of this one. I think we have clear support. So um, I'm okay with it moving forward.
Next item we have is discuss Kodiak Island Borough representation on the Alaska Municipal League Board of Directors and Alaska Municipal League Legislative Committee. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly. Um, there are currently um seats that are open uh on the Alaska Municipal Board of Directors. Um, there's a director's seat, which is uh for the borough, um, not the cities. So they're they're very particular with um the assignment of the seats on the AML board. So this one is particular to, specific to burrows, borough representatives, um, coming from the burrows. That's what I meant. And then we have another seat, which is the NACO representative seat. And that seat is be, currently being held by Mayor Arnt. There's another seat on um an AML board, which is um the legislative committee seat. So if there's any assembly member, or maybe the mayor, who would like to run for the seats because there's financial implications, the assembly, assembly's practice is to approve the person who's gonna be serving on these boards, or running for office on these boards. Thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know whether it's appropriate now at this point. However, I would like to declare candidacy for um Alaska Municipal Board of Directors, the director's seat representing the borough, uh, for myself. Thank you.
Okay. And then also, I'd, I would be interested in um running again for the NACO representative on the uh Alaska Municipal League Board. And uh, any other thoughts? Jared?
Um, Mr. Mayor, do you mind um talking a little bit more about NACO? Um, I I'm familiar with it, but maybe for the public. And um, you've been on the board for or been the representative for like a year now?
You, you're a year and a half going on, too.
So what have you seen, kind of like benefit you in 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 your work here?
And what I've, what I've found is um, there are some of us that have been pushing, uh, kind of Alaska's been pushing, but we're also getting others to come on board with it, which is, we're, we're going for a doubling of the PILT money, which is a very small pittance um that the federal government pays for a payment in lieu of taxes. And that's been the big push kind of the last two years. And um, there's other, there's other committee assignments on there, but that's kind of where we've been concentrating a little bit there. The um, I want to say that what we get in information from there, for instance, the current year, while I was traveling to the um NACO board meeting, which was in Washington DC, then after it, our manager, Amy Williams, came, and then we did some lobbying with our um federal, federal representatives and the Coast Guard. And I feel that that was very beneficial for them to to uh see us there and 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 work with them. The, the other thing that that happens with the Alaska Municipal League and being part of the board is it's a representation of across Alaska. And those, rather than just the, the annual convention, those smaller board uh meetings, you're able to get what are the problems in the different communities? And also, what can we do to help the legislature? Not just demand things from them, but what can we do to to help and bring that information back to the communities, back to the school districts? Which, schools is the biggest, the biggest part of the Kodiak Island Borough. Purpose for being around here. So, um, so it's a, it's a big im- impact. Uh, I do feel that it is beneficial. The the last time that a borough mayor um actually sat on the board and on the NACO seat in particular was Jerome Selby, Mayor Jerome Selby. That was the last time. And um, and one of the benefits too is we're not, you know, so like when Amy and I went, half of my costs were already paid for by Alaska Municipal League. So, so it helps in in trying to do that. And that happens. There is the um February, between February and March, that's typically in Washington DC. So we would hope to do that again this coming year on there. So we'll see what happens on there. But um, uh, anything else you can think of, Jared, that I might?
Uh, no, thank you for that. I just wanted to echo my support for for NACO for those reasons. I know that PILT is a huge piece of that. Um, but uh, also, the webinars that they provide for us are extremely informative. I just went to one earlier this week. Uh, I didn't go to one. I was laying on my bed sick, listening to one. Um, but I was able to stay awake for that one. Um, and on OVOE settlement funds and what other communities around the United States are doing with their OVOE settlement. So, holy cow, when we talk about that again come budget time, um, some really neat and creative and innovative principled ways of of using that money. So anyway, so it's a, I think it's a very good resource for us also.
We've also had, they also have an educational component of it that we've had borough employees go through. And uh, um, and it's also available for assembly members, too. So it's and then their standing back up procurement um organization in there so that, similar to GSA contracts that we can tag on to nationwide. So, on there. Scott?
Does the city have a NACO representative, too?
No, they have National Association of Cities on there. And Terry Haynes is the um representative for Alaska Municipal League on that. So right now Kodiak has both the county and the city representation. But they do not meet together. They're separate. Bo?
Thank you. Um, I guess, just in general, just, I just want to keep repeating that that I encourage anyone who is elected or appointed to any of these boards or committees, that when they return from travel, that um was funded by taxpayer dollars, that we have an extensive report of discussions that took place, um, items that you brought back with you that can potentially help the borough. I think it's important that we convey and communicate when we are spending taxpayer dollars on travel for these events and these meetings, that we're bringing information back that's helpful for the community. Um, so I I encourage folks to expand on on reporting when they return back. Um, again, just for increasing transparency with what we're doing in government here. Uh, I will not be here next week, but I will put my support behind Mr. Sharrett for that director's seat. Um, I I think he would be well-suited for that position, and he's, clearly does more research than probably many of us combined. Um, so I think he'd be a great fit. So I I won't be here to do it officially during the meeting, but I'll put my support behind you right now.
Any further discussion? Nova?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I just want to note that this, um, the the point, the appointees to these seats, if you get nominated and elected, or if you get elected to these seats, it will require that you're physically present at the three meetings and the fourth one also. So there's like four meetings that you need to be physically present at the board meetings, okay? I, and then also, I'm gonna require, or I'm gonna ask the mayor and Assembly Member Sharrett to fill out the forms. I will be placing the approval of this at the next regular meeting so that you can take an official action on it. Thank you.
Yeah, and this is only the first step. You still have to get elected by Alaska Municipal League in general. So, okay, thank you. Next item we have is packet review. And first item on that is public hearing. An ordinance number 2025-8, an ordinance of the Kodiak Island Borough accepting and appropriating grant funds for the 2021 statewide salmon disaster. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this will be our public hearing for the Salmon Disaster Fund acceptance. The US Secretary of Commerce declared a statewide salmon disaster for the 2020-2021 fishery disaster that affected all species of salmon in certain areas of Alaska. Consequently, disaster funds were allocated to address losses to the affected salmon management areas. The Kodiak Island Borough has been notified of eligibility to receive $25,255 to compensate for lost income due to the effects of the fishery disaster that year. This ordinance is in accordance with Kodiak Island Borough Code 3.25.040.C, which requires grant funds which are unlimited as to use or subject only to general limitations be appropriated by ordinance and being, and include an appropriate budget amendment. Um, on your briefing sheet, it says the fiscal impact would be an increase to the general fund. We actually changed that in the ordinance itself. We updated to the Capital Projects Fund. Our finance director has created a fisheries development fund inside of the Capital Projects Fund. So you'll see on line 40 that that was updated from general fund to Capital Projects Fund.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Seeing none, that'll be on there. Next item under public hearings is assembly review of the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office Liquor License Transfer of Location Application from Island Hotels LLC Doing Business as Kodiak Harbor Convention Center, License Number 3480, From Current Location of 211 West Resnov Drive To 203 Alder Lane, Alaska Island Hotels LLC, Doing Business as Kodiak Compass Suites. Staff report, Nova?
Mr. Mayor, I, we may have skipped an item for, oh, no, no. I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong sp- on the wrong spot. Um, so this one is uh moving the, actually, it's a transfer of location for uh Island Hotels, and we've done our investigation, and we are recommending um voicing non-protest.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to um contracts. We have contract number 201925, Amendment Number Two, Version Two, Residential and Commercial Solid Waste Contract with Waste Connections Doing Business as Alaska Ways. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the October 17th, 2024, regular assembly meeting, the assembly indefinitely postponed the further consideration of the first draft of Amendment Two. Instruction as staff was to turn with a minimally revised version, well, actually, a very revised version to minimally revise the current contract to reduce the scope of edits made and ensure the contract's continuity through its term. In response to this directive, staff and the borough attorney reviewed the existing contract as amended by Amendment One in March of 2021, and determined it largely aligns with the assembly's direction from October 17th. Accordingly, staff is now presenting Amendment Number Two, Version Two, which includes three changes. The first change being the annual reporting date changed from February 15th to April 30th to better align with the annual adjustment due date. The second item is shortening the number of days in which a commercial container will be removed for non-payment from 90 days to 60 days. And the third item is adopting Appendix A, which is a flow chart for standard services per the contract as amended in Amendment One, which will just help us better clarify and kind of an education pe- for peace for um account holders if they want to find out what service they're eligible for. So you'll see a much reduced um portion for the amendment in your packet and a beautifully colored flow chart created by Patricia that outlines service.
Discussion?
Sorry, and Dave is here tonight, if you have any um questions that I can't answer.
Bo?
Thank you. I I only have one. Um, so on the, the flow chart, Madam Manager, um, under multifamily and commercial premises, um, halfway down the chart for two-yard, two-yard dumpster or larger as needed, there's language under both of those. It says states, should the contractor in its sole discretion determine there is insufficient room at the premises to safely place a dumpster? room at the premises to safely place a dumpster, they will either, and that lists options for both of those. And then under that in green, under the contract section state or noted, if there's a dispute as to the size container required or whether a customer's waste stream requires more than a customer request, customer requested containers, the borough manager or designee will review the circumstances. Do you see any potential conflicts with that, with either of those? I mean?
No, I understand, I understand the question though, and I understand how you could come up with that. So the multifamily premise one about, what that's talking about is if they look at this space for parking and that dumpster is going to take up the very needed parking, and if they had roll carts instead, they could stick them on the side or it wouldn't take up a parking place, then the contractor, and they've asked for that, the contractor can say, yes, I clearly see that your parking is affected by having that dumpster there. So we can A, either allow roll carts that could be there instead. We just did that with a fourplex a couple of weeks ago. It was because of bear issues more than parking issues, but that is an option. Or if businesses are very close together and there's parking issues, Alaska Waste can allow people to share the dumpster. The part that you're seeing in green is more identifying the amount of waste produced. So if you are a business and you ask for a two-yard dumpster, but every time they come, there's your two-yard dumpster packed plus garbage bags all over it, or you know, it's overflowing, or they can't dump it, or whatever, then they, after they record that a few times, they will contact the customer and say, hey, you're producing more trash than this size. So we recommend that you step up. If that customer is like, no, 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 I don't want to do that, and they want to argue it, that's when the borough can step in and the borough manager or their designee could say, hey, Alaska Waste, what proof do you have? How often does this happen? And Alaska Waste, when it does happen, takes pictures and writes the dates and does a pretty good job in recording that. And so we would just try to listen to both sides and then determine if a bigger size is needed at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you. Beau, as you started reading, I was thinking, get out of my head because you were about to journey down the same question I had, but then we missed it. So I'm wondering if we can talk about option B under this flow chart, which is allow one or more customers to share a dumpster. I see this as being a potential issue if we haven't defined or if there's not maintaining of the financial responsibility of this. And how do we define who's responsible for a shared dumpster?
So this is already in the contract. So if you don't like this, we're going to have to change the contract language about that. I'll say that first. The one instance that I can think of where two businesses shared a dumpster, or there was a multi-use building and a business that had the same owner, and there was a dumpster right in the middle. Everyone else that I've seen to ask share has been no, because it has been two completely different, do you know, I'm getting, yes, I don't know of any other that have been allowed to do that. And so there are some businesses that are right next to businesses, and when there are complaints, I was like, hey, can this business share with this business? And the answer was just no. But the one that did was allowed, it was the same owners. And then they, you're required to get a dumpster that's appropriate to your waste stream. So if your one business has a four-yard dumpster and you want to add another whole building to it, you'd probably be asked to jump up to the next larger size just to manage the appropriate waste stream from those two. But I, in that one case that happened, the multi-use building has sold, and so that's no longer in play.
Continue, Ryan.
So, and I understand that it's written in our contract, but I just want to analyze the words of this. So and it says allow one or more customers, meaning there already a customer registered with Alaska Waste, to share a dumpster. So my question is, how does the financial responsibility remain intact or wholly the responsibility of a single person? Are you the arbiter of, hey, you used 60% this month and you used 40%?
No, the borough is not involved in that decision at all. That's an Alaska Waste decision. The only time we get involved, or the borough is asked to be the arbiter, would be if there was a change in service that the customer didn't agree with.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions or that? Okay, next contract is contract number FY 2025-29, architectural and engineering services contract for various capital improvement projects with Jensen Yorba Wall Incorporated. Staff report, Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This contract is for architectural and engineering services to assist the Kodiak Island Borough with various renovation, new construction, and renewal and replacement projects at various borough facilities, including but not limited to schools, government offices, and research facilities. This contract does not include the hospital or the long-term care center because those are on a separate contract completely. A request for proposals was issued on September 23rd, 2024 with a due date of October 24th, 2024. Three proposals were received from the following firms, Jensen Yorba Wall, LCG Land Tech, and InVision Architecture. The evaluation committee consisting of the entire roster of the Architectural and Engineering Review Board, which consisted of 11 individuals. All proposals along with a blank rubric sheet were provided to all evaluators electronically, by email, and with a OneDrive link. Eight evaluators were able to submit their scores to Engineering and Facilities Department, which were compiled and averaged on an Excel spreadsheet. Based on these scores, Jensen Yorba Wall Incorporated had the highest cumulative average score. The ARB convened on October 30th, 2024 to discuss the proposals and recommend a firm for contract award to the assembly. Attached, you'll find the draft minutes from this meeting in which the ARB board moved to recommend Jensen Yorba Wall as the selected proposer for the Architectural and Engineering Services Contract. And then the contract you see is actually almost exactly like the current contract we have with updated dates.
And the, it's basically a three-year contract with one two-year extension? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Jared, and then Ryan.
I support this contract. I've been on a few, or been on committees with a few projects with Jensen Yorba Wall. Very impressed with their work and their follow-through and their timeliness. And they know Kodiak in and out and know what special conditions that we have here for, for our facilities. So yeah, I'm glad to see that they still want to work with us.
Cool. We're going to take, I'm sorry, I had you down and skipping right over you. Go for it.
Thank you. So I participated in this review of the proposals. I was one of the 11 due to my appointment to the Architectural and Engineering Review Board. I want to compliment Dave and your staff. This was actually one of the easiest, most efficient, and transparent reviews of a proposal that I've ever been involved with at any level. This was very nicely done. What I liked about this was that it included everyone. I was actually shocked that I was going to get to evaluate this. That wasn't the intent when we originally asked for the ARB as a body to review this, but I'm not complaining. For those that aren't familiar with it, the 11 individuals also consisted of the manager, the school district as well, because they're a stakeholder, myself included. Who is the, oh, Dave, thank you. And we, the way that the tabulation was presented to us, we got to see everybody else's opinion. We got to discuss it. It was an open, very candid discussion. There was no silos. It was a gentleman's conversation all the way across the board. There was no heated discussions or debates. One thing that did come up in this was the ownership of the drawings, the plan, you know, the things that they develop for us, and we, we get those already. So that was a good discussion point for us as well, so that in the future, five years, 10 years, 15 years, or whenever Jensen Yorba Wall decides not to work with us, we don't have to then pay to recreate all these facility drawings. So I really appreciated that. And so I just really, Dave, you and your staff did a bang-up job. And I don't hand those out very often, so take that one all the way to the staff, please. So, thank you.
Jared?
Really quick, I would like to thank, is it Yasha? Yasha, Cindy, and Amy for your gentlemanliness during this process.
Cool. Okay. Hearing no other discussion or questions, we're going to take a seven-minute break here. It's been requested. We'll reconvene the work session. And basically what we have is, next on the agenda is other items. First one is assembly review of the State of Alaska Alcohol and Marijuana Control Office beverage dispensary license renewal application for Blue Incorporated doing business as B&amp;B Bar, license number 85. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly. We have reviewed this at the October 31 work session. It seems like that the assembly is leaning towards not protesting this application. If you wish, I could change the motion to voice non-protest if that's the will of the assembly, or we can leave it as is. And if you fail it at the next meeting, then I will write an unobjection letter. What's the desire of the assembly?
Well, one of the concerns was the number of complaints on it, but it turns out that most of them had to do with trying to cool things off in the bar. So it seems to me like we should support this.
Okay, I can change the motion to voice non-protest.
Please do.
Thank you.
I support that as the second. Thanks.
Okay. Next item is review and possible protest of the continued operation of certain liquor licenses or endorsements during the second year of their biannual license period. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the assembly. Years and years ago, not years and years ago, but when I moved- Years and years ago, not years and years ago, but when I moved, before I moved to the city, we used to present the biannual licenses to the Assembly. I believe that was stopped when I moved. So we're assuming that process again, that practice again. And we have reviewed a total of 16 licenses. And again, two of these are for, are the REPLs that are owned by Ms. Yun. And this is your opportunity to voice protest to the continued operation of these licenses. You also, for the Peking Restaurant, we have written a letter to the ABC Board already. And then the second-floor restaurant actually was due last year, a year ago, but we haven't received notification on the status of that license as of the moment. But we don't want to miss the opportunity to voice protest if that's the desire of the Assembly. So based on the decision that you just made, or kind of the direction that you've given me about voicing non-protest to the B&amp;B Bar, I believe that I have to remove these two, the B&amp;B and the Tonys, because it's, you know, it's the number of trouble reports for both these places. So if that's the desire of the Assembly, I can just leave License 2611 and License 3293, which are for the Sizzler Burger Peking and the second-floor restaurant, and remove B&amp;B Bar and Tonys Bar from the objection list.
That's what I'm hearing, seeing. Great.
Thank you. And the process for this is that you're going to voice objection to the two, and then we're going to postpone the, we're going to schedule it again at the next meeting in December, because that should allow us to give notice to the license holder and then give them the opportunity to defend their application. That's actually in the Alaska Administrative Code. Okay? Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item will be mayoral appointments of Assembly member representatives to different boards and committees. I'll be working on that, and that'll be in the agenda on, I should say, in the packet on Monday there. The, next is assembly approval of a candidate to the Alaska Municipal League of Board, Board of Directors. That's what we've been talking about. Confirmation of the mayoral appointment of Ms. Judith Phillips to the Solid Waste Advisory Board. Basically, we have to accept Kerry Iron's resignation and advertise for two weeks before we can fill that seat. That's why, on there. Correct. So then two weeks starts. And then the next is authorization to cancel the January 2nd, 2025 regular meeting. Staff report, Nova?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. So when we drafted the calendar for this year, we failed to look at the schedule in December. And there's no work session scheduled in December, and I think it's because of the holidays. I think it's appropriate to cancel the January 2nd regular meeting. If you don't want to cancel it, then we're going to have to schedule a work session in December so that we can have the January 2nd meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ryan?
I fully support removing the January 2nd regular meeting to preserve not only our work session free December, primarily because I won't be here, but I won't be here for the January 2nd meeting either. So I totally support that. And I recall a conversation when we were approving the calendar that it was moot since things like this would come up throughout the year. So I support the removal of this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Then moving on, we got next items of manager's comments. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met with the acting city manager and acting deputy city manager to talk about short-term rentals and how the city of Kodiak tracks them. They do have a licensing program. They currently have 58 that they know about inside of the city limits that have signed up for their business license program. We're going to continue collaborating with them. So when we talk about this at the next joint work session, we'll have the background research work completed to know. We'll ask assessing and GIS to update the maps of where those are located. And we're trying to figure out what an accurate number of those are. So as you guys discuss plans moving forward, we actually have a baseline on how many that we have. So that was a great meeting. This morning, AMLJIA and APEI are going to merge. Well, at least the AMLJIA membership met and unanimously voted to merge. That target date for the merger is July 1st, 2025. And I think you can tell by the unanimous vote that everyone is pretty excited about that moving board. Last week, I attended some emergency management training. I did the Emergency Operations Center Leader Skill Set Course and got to be in with members from all over the country and hear about how they handle emergencies and their experiences inside of the EOC. And it was enlightening. And for a FEMA post-assessment, that was the hardest one I took by far. It was, it just wasn't, oh, I remember that. Here's the answer. I like, I studied. And so it was, it was actually hard. Our Alaska Supreme Court case is coming up. Oral arguments are going to be the first week of December. Both Seaman and I have bought our tickets and are ready to roll. We're going to, the Gnome Supreme Court oral arguments and hours are one right after the other, two days in a row. So we're going to be able to hear both of those, which I think is great because those cases are pretty closely related. We have talked week after week about the AML conference. I think it's really great when Assembly members go. It kind of puts everyone on the same page with information from the state. And so if you can go, it's really worthwhile. I was asked to present about grant process and not how we do grants in the Kodiak Island Borough, but why I say no so often. Because Nils constantly says, hey, will you lead this for this date? Will you do this? And I am like, no, 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 no. And he, and so we're going to present on why we say that and talk about capacity of staff and the workforce to follow through with some of those grants. Even though the opportunities sometimes look great, understanding your staff's capacity is really important. We have two current, actually, there's a third one now. So we're recruiting for an associate planner and appraiser tech, and we also have a temporary labor position open as well. In community development, they had a planning and zoning work session last night. The work session focused on training and a review of definition issues inside of Title 17. They're currently talking about older adult uses and pet-related uses. And tonight, Assembly member Whiteside has asked them to start including the language around short-term rentals and making that be more up-to-date with what we actually call things now. The commission reviewed the packet for November 20th and the proposed changes to Chapter 17. Our community development director attended a meeting of the Kodiak Fisheries Adaptation Plan. It was held at the Kodiak Fisheries Research Center funded by NOAA. It's focusing on adaptation of the Kodiak fishery to changes in climate and impacts on the ecosystems. And he was asked to help with the visioning for this project. There is a website there. I know you can't click on it, but if you, when this packet goes online, and you'll be able to click on that link to learn more about it. In assessing, they are 92% done with fieldwork. So that's, must feel really good. Noshka, Valz, Flats, Chinnyak, and Pesegshak, you are almost off the hook for two more years until they're back. We are done down to one single applicant for senior citizen and disabled veteran exemptions. We're still waiting for them to be determined by the PFD. So we're looking really good with that. Starting next week, the village travel dates are coming up for assessing to travel to all the villages with Kana to help people sign up for senior citizen exemptions and disabled veterans exemptions. We do have a Board of Equalization coming up next week. You will be getting a very nice binder from the assessor that shows you what you need to know to get ready for that Board of Equalization. The appraiser tech is inside of assessing. In engineering and facilities, our architectural and engineering services, RFP, we just talked about it in the packet review. That is going to Jensen Yorba Wall, so we're excited to get them re-signed up with the borough. The borough office lift stations have been fixed, and all of our restrooms are up and working, which is wonderful. I don't think you appreciate that kind of stuff until it goes away. You've probably noticed a lack of stuff out in front of the building, so that's very nice. We have noticed that they're a little bit loud when the pumps kick on, and so we're going to work on some insulation in that space so it's not noisy in that borough conference room downstairs. We don't have any updates on the borough building boiler installation, but I'm just going to keep leaving it there until it's done. At the KFRC, we have additional electrical circuits that have been priced for GSA to take a look at because NOAA wants to add additional chillers. We have some issues with fume hood jobs. Reported as complete, but the site inspection shows that there's some deficiencies. And so we're working with GSA and the folks over in that building to get that wrapped up. We asked both GSA and NOAA for help with cost sharing associated with saltwater discharge from the facility because we are not saltwater discharge experts, and it's not like a borough power. But they both said no, so it's back on us. We're still going to work on it, but the initial answer was no. And we are working with our divers that we usually use to perform the pigging on the saltwater intake. It's been a while since that's been done, so we need to get those folks out there and get that done. Out at the landfill, we're working on the Baylor concrete floor. As they have started taking that wear layer off, they have found that there are more layers underneath than we had anticipated. There's a poorly consolidated layer in there that is kind of a surprise to everyone. There hasn't been anything that we're worried about, the structural slab. They did, Cody and Dave went out and took some more cores. They're working with engineering firm. We're still anticipating the concrete pour to happen next week. The Baylor rebuild is almost done, but because the facility is closed, we're still doing that loose fill. When we do loose fill and it's not compacted, all you got to do is drive by the landfill and see why we compact, because the loose fill tends to blow all over the place, and it's been very windy. So we have some loose trash issues that we'll be working on. If you are taking your trash out to the landfill, there's a dumpster that's been provided for residential customers, and the commercial hauler, well, I already said, is doing loose fill. So we'll be very excited when we're done with that, and we can go back to using the Baylor. Because we have repaired and done maintenance on the electric fence, we've had a lot less bear activity inside the landfill. So the six bears that were walking down the road are no longer there. So that's nice. At the leachate treatment plant, we do have our new pups in, and they have been reaching close to that 200 gallons per minute that we were actually shooting for. So it was really great to get those in. We're going to have to upgrade our variable frequency drives. And we're also looking at some more adjustments to the operational software. But we're off to a really good start with those new pumps, and we think the leachate treatment plant's going to be operating a lot better. Another problem we had out there is with the leachate treatment septic tank. There's only two employees, and that thing is filling up rapidly. And so we have some kind of infiltration into the septic tank that we're investigating. At the Peterson School roof, we haven't had any changes from the contractor on that flashing that came off, but we are working with the school district to create a joint project list. We have biweekly meetings with the school district every other Thursday. There was just one this afternoon. We had some citizens call in and talk about the snow removal and ice control contract and for Bayview and Minnoshka specifically. And I know one of the comments was disappointment that we didn't put it on the special meeting, and they thought that it, we thought that it didn't warrant special meeting status. It absolutely does, although it doesn't have to go to the Assembly because we changed to open procurement rules. It was a request for quotes because each contract is under $25,000. So those have been out. The bids are back in. We had two bids. We, I think we have a clear winner, but we're going to officially announce tomorrow. So we will have those contracts signed, day of tomorrow? Tomorrow. So we don't have to, it's rolling. So those will be set for tomorrow. And so we're very happy that that's done. We do not have the facility's snow and ice control contract out. It was withdrawn. The current contractor has agreed to continue work, but we are rewriting that facility's snow and ice control contract with our new RFP template. So that'll go out with that new template, as well as our elevator contract was written with that new template as well. In finance, if you made a timely first half payment for your property taxes, the remaining second half payment is due tomorrow, November 15th. If you intend on mailing your payment instead of delivering it in person to the borough offices, make sure you walk in the post office and get it stamped with that November 15th date here in Kodiak or wherever you are mailing it in. It has to be stamped by the post office. Don't just throw it in a mailbox and walk away because it will be late. We're still working on our 2024 audit inside of management discussion and analysis and statistical sections, but they're very close to wrapping that up. For their staff, an offer was made and accepted for the fiscal analyst position, and the new staff member is going to start here at the borough on December 2nd. In information technology, they're working on some different areas of policy development, including IT network documentation, disaster recovery policies, and GIS documentation. In the security audit, they have their preliminary copy of the draft, and they're reviewing it. So we're almost through that process. They have been working hard to upgrade software at the LTP, and they are applying asset tags to everything that moves around the building. So they have a new system of watching all of the hardware. They're working with the deputy clerk on software inside of Laserfish. And GIS has started working with assessing on the correcting acreage information inside of the database. So everything is actually working really well inside of IT. At Bayside, the State of Alaska Fire Marshal's Office Fire and Emergency Services Instructor Course was co-hosted by the Bayside Fire Department and Kodiak Fire Department. 13 members between the two fire departments, and one firefighter from the mainland came over. They spent five days completing coursework and projects. And day six, they had written in practical evaluations. Our firefighter, one course is about halfway through, and they're getting ready for their midterms. The Bayside celebrated Veterans Day. They have 11 members of the department who are veterans, three who are still on active duty, and two are actually out in deployment. So they wanted to be sure to thank our veterans. And on a personal note, I wanted to thank the staff at Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center. The staff, the Kana doctors that come over. I got to firsthand witness the new hospitalist program. And my family was in the ER for that whole white sands explosion, and I got to watch the ER go from having just a couple of people to, I mean, like staff members, to all hands on deck and handle that emergency. And it, it was really impressive. So bravo to Providence and all the people that came in to handle that tragedy. It was really something to be in that space for when that came through. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Scott?
Does anybody in the city collect an analysis of total occupancy throughout the year in the short-term rentals?
No. The only thing that they do is, well, sort of, because they collect accommodations tax. So because, based on the amount of tax comes in, you can kind of guess, but it's just a percentage. So it, the, the actual answer is no, but we do have some indication based from accommodations tax.
I think that that's important to follow in some way in your discussions with the city. And as we move forward with trying to deal with our short-term rentals in the borough, maybe that's something we should focus on as well.
I think that that could be extrapolated from the amount of tax that people pay in.
I think so, too.
Jared, and then Ryan?
On the assessment and taxation implementation project, this is the one where we have the old one running concurrently with Tyler as we're implementing Tyler.
Yes, so we're currently running Harris, and we are switching to Tyler. And so that's that one where we're paying both software platforms. So we will continue with Harris all the way until that implementation date in July of 2025. That July date gets us through all of the major milestones for the tax year. And so we make sure that we are good to go before we switch platforms. So we'll run parallel for all of the major events that need to happen for us to be able to collect taxes. And then after we are through that- And then after we are through that, we will make the official switch to Tyler.
So June 25th, is that official separation? There'll be some time to assess.
Yes, well, so we're only, they give us a percentage of how far we're through. And right now we're at 21%, so obviously we have a long ways to go. But a lot of that is just the research and how we do systems and how we're going to adapt the software that they provide. So we're on schedule for that summer 2025 start date. So we do have some complications with all of the sketches that we have in assessing, making sure that they'll transfer over to the Tyler software. But we just hired a temporary employee today that is going to work just, well, not just on that, but that's going to be one of their main focuses to make sure that that data is ready to go over.
Cool, thank you.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. So the first one, could you get me the dates on the Alaska Supreme Court case and when those oral arguments are going? So like location and time.
It is December 3rd and 4th at 11:00 a.m. I don't remember location, but I'll find out for you.
Nesbit Courthouse, maybe?
I think that's right, but I will, it's the one directly across from the Captain Cook.
Okay. The next question, if I may continue. Okay, so snow removal and ice control. The requests for quotes were put out. They were due today. You have an apparent low bid. Has the Service District been involved with the review of that bid?
No. The, well, we did, so after the last meeting when the Service District members and chairs came in and asked about, or they didn't like the self-dispatch and they didn't like the way that the charges were, they wanted to go back to time and materials. Yes, we heard that. And so that request for quotes went out, included all of that information and did it the way that they wanted.
So I'd like to request that before you announce an awardee tomorrow, that you guys reach out to the Service District and involve them in that decision-making process or at least seek input so that they're included. I plan on spending a significant amount of time in Service District contracts to avoid some perceived conflicts and things of that nature as we progress down this path.
Yes. Those comments that were made about how we don't want to be in this position again couldn't agree more. When we do Service District contracts, they will start July 1st, 2025 for the beginning of fiscal year '26. And they will run for three years and then have the options for extending. So we won't ever be dealing with this next to the snow deadlines or worried about weather. So they will come up in the summer and we will maintain that schedule moving forward.
Perfect. We'll just call this a warm-up then for tomorrow in involving the Service District for conversations. The next one, if I again may continue. Facility snow and ice removal contract was withdrawn and will be rewritten using a new RFP template. Could you expand on the RFP template? Is this, I guess, give me the origin or where this RFP template?
This was something that our project manager helped us with and it is from those two cities that you gave me to look at. We use what they put out and adapted what we had to a format very similar to theirs. And I'm happy to, like, I'm happy to send that to you so you can see it.
Nope, I fully trust your judgment on this. I just want for general conversation of where this template is coming from. It's vague in the description, so I want to make sure that
Sure.
everyone realizes that this is also a self-generated RFP template.
So I think we had a conversation, we met with engineering facilities and the project manager and engineering facilities. And we talked about templates and how we're going to move forward. So we didn't run into some of the same problems that we had recently. And I think over the years, because we do a lot of copy and paste when we're making new RFPs or RFQs or whatever, that the distinction between the two had kind of become blended. So we are creating templates for if we're going to do an RFQ versus an RFP and start separating out the different way that we do procurement.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that.
David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Forgive my ignorance. What is the Borough's procedure for establishing a bid evaluation committee?
Our code lists out several factors in which we can use to evaluate different bids. And so like for the architect and engineering, that is in the ARB's code that says that they will be the reviewing committee for that. The bid review committee is usually done by the department that has put out the actual package. And the way that we do it is people are still mailing in. They mail to Finance. Finance puts in a safe note. They're all sealed. No one looks at them until the bid opening and then that's open to the public. When the bids are opened, you can, we usually do it in this space right here and the people can come in and watch. And then if a bid is canceled before we get to the bid opening, those sealed packages just go back.
So I think there might be room for improvement in identifying who sits on those evaluations going forward. I've seen different bid evaluations go completely off the rails because of, you know, somebody had a personal agenda with one of the bidders, you know, from a previous work relationship or whatever.
Sure.
And so maybe having a process that identifies who sits on the bid evaluations that will include a little more diverse group might be beneficial to just helping, you know, maintain the trust of the populace of Kodiak that it's not, you know, just four people who get to pick who wins each time, you know, same four people. And I realize obviously that's not the case, but I think there's, you know, an opportunity for an Assembly member to sit on a bid evaluation committee for some of these bids going forward. Or as was mentioned, Service District members to sit on the bid evaluation committees as it directly pertains to their service districts. So just a thought, obviously not an action item right now, but I think there's always room to improve in bid evaluation. And the second one I just wanted to offer maybe as a professional suggestion is that if you're going to poach an employee from an Assembly member, heads up, might be nice. But congratulations for gaining an outstanding employee.
I will say that we did not go looking for that employee. That employee came to us, so sorry about that. We also hired someone out of the landfill that used to work for a business that another Borough staff member's family owns. And so we got it for that too, so point taken.
Okay, any further there? Then I'll move on to Clerk's comments. NOAA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Assembly. I am glad the elections are over. It was, we started in July and we ended last week. For our absentee voting, we had 888 people come through this office or this, the Assembly chambers. Quite a bit of people that came in and voted. I could not have done it without my staff, Lena and Irene and all the election volunteers. We had approximately 50 people who worked the elections, so I would like to thank all of them. We will be, records update, we will be presenting you a contracts destruction list on November 21. We were processing, we processed a records request last week and we are also processing a records request that is very extensive. So we are working on that. Lena has been working hard on the update of Laserfish and our meta-datas and our workflows. So she's working closely with Mitchell in the IT department. So that's quite a bit of work and great job Lena for doing such an amazing job. It's a very tedious work. So our fiscal year budget is coming up. And before I go on vacation next month, I'm planning to enter in my level one budget for the Assembly and the Court. And also we're busy processing the end of the year expiring seats on the different boards and committees of the Borough. So you will be presented with those appointments. Some of them will be mayoral appointments and some of them will be Assembly appointments. Miscellaneous, we have received an Alute Heritage Foundation appeal. You have the packet before you. I have also included the guidelines for that meeting. And it would be, I strongly encourage you to read those guidelines because that will help us have a smooth BOE hearing. It's a little bit different from your regular Assembly meetings because you're sitting as a quasi-judicial board. I would like to also caution you, please do not call the assessor and ask questions. And also do not call the appellant either because we don't want you to have those ex parte contacts. You need to be basing your decision on what's before you in your packet or whatever you hear during the meeting. And also I would like to remind you that we are going to have a Boards and Committees and Commissions training. We have sent out the invitation to all of you and I strongly encourage you to attend. It would be an opportunity for you to meet our other Boards and Committee members. It's going to be on Thursday, December 5. I will be doing parliamentary procedures training from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. And then the attorney will be doing an Open Meetings Act, Ethics and Public Records Act training from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. We will be having refreshments and I would like, I would like you to RSBB so we can plan accordingly. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Beau.
Thank you. I have a question about the agenda item request forms in our lists here. So there appears to be two lists. The first one, does that mean that these items are still, could be brought back forward for discussion? So 3 through 21 on this page?
3 to 21 are pending. Some of them are already scheduled, like number five, it's scheduled on, or there's comments. We discussed it on February 29. We discussed ADU on October 31. So there's a few notes in the comments section here. And then the ones highlighted in yellow, those are pending. They're either scheduled or they're on the agenda or they're scheduled in the future.
May I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
The reason I ask is, for example, number six, I would like to bring this back forward as well. What would be your preference? That we bring back the same one or co-sponsor this one to get it back? I would like to renew this discussion, but especially now that we're turning the calendar year and starting to think about next year's budget discussions, what would be your preferred way to?
I would like to defer to the mayor who schedules these items on the agenda. Would you like them to fill out a new form, Mr. Mayor, so that they can give you new information?
No, you don't have to fill out a new form. If we've got some interest in it, I don't have a problem with putting it on. I'm seeing some heads shake, yes. Ryan.
So representing 66% of this list, I feel like Mr. Whiteside is correct. I'm not sure how to progress these forward either. So I'm looking for a direction. However, we get that forward, I think we've got mechanisms in place now where we can get a couple other Assembly members and just kind of push this onto an agenda. So I'm interested in trying to get some of these topics that are quite aged moving forward.
What we'll do is it's on the agenda for a special meeting, Deputy Presiding Officer. And we can see what, if we come to a conclusion there, because I'd like to work with whoever it is to go over these. So I'm there. So next item is Assembly Member comments. Beau, I'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay. I received more correspondence from members of Service Area 1, in particular on Lily Drive. I don't know if this was in my purview during work session, Madam Clerk, to, or if it's within my purview at all, to direct the manager to seek out a work order or an RFQ to get this covert work done on Lily Drive. We've been contacted from two different residents there requesting this. So I would, if it's within my purview, I'd like to direct the manager to submit a work order or RFQ with the shortest duration possible to clear the ditch extending from 440 to 482 Lily Drive. I don't know if we can do that, but that would be my preference to get this done. I appreciate cost effectiveness with managing service areas. This to me seems like an extraordinary circumstance that we should get done before the ground freezes, so. Other than that, heart goes out to those who were injured in that disaster. And I echo the manager's sentiment that we're very fortunate that all of our first responders and medical care professionals banded together to help those poor kids and get them, get them taken care of and off to Anchorage if they needed to. And for the public for pouring out so many donations in such a short amount of time, including a member of the Assembly who is organizing a fundraiser as well. It says a lot about this small community and that when people are really needed, folks step up. And that's really impressive. So thanks to all of the generous people who have done that.
Thank you. Jared.
A couple of things. Big huge thanks to the election workers out there. My favorite day is the first Tuesday every four years. It's just so fun to go out and vote on that day and see the energy of voting. It's great. I also want to thank, just a shout out to the manager and the Clerk's office for, they just have great responsiveness, I think, to Assembly needs, so I want to thank you for that. Then also echo what Mr. Whiteside said about the incident, the tragedy this weekend. And I was, I'd mentioned I was in an opioid settlement webinar through NACO the other day and there are a lot of narratives about that. And one of the, one of the speakers said that when it comes to things like that, we ourselves, the community, we are the medicine. You know, it's, we have to take care of ourselves and fix ourselves because we can't always rely on somebody else to do it for us. And the way the community came together around that really, I think, is a great example of how we are, we are our own medicine in many cases. And also that there are two very, very difficult gifts to give. The first one is freedom. Freedom is the hardest gift to give. The second hardest gift to give is forgiveness. And so I'd like us to think about that also about this week and the things that we're hearing too. It's a virtue of the strong, you know, to forgive. And I just know a couple of the kids who are out there. I don't know all of the people involved. But I think it's, yeah, it's a virtue of strength and it's difficult to do. But we should look, we should look to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's all been said, but I feel like I need to as well, I guess. Thank and congratulate the Clerk and our election volunteers. Having a fair and open election is critical for a democracy to survive. And so I'm just very grateful for those folks who participate, especially, you know, those volunteers. I see the same faces every year when I show up at Bayside to cast my vote. And it's really just a cool thing. And as was said, you know, prayers are with those families, all the families. all the families affected by the White Sands tragedy. When I conferred degrees last year at the high school, one of the things I told those the graduates is that Kodiak is an amazing place to be and an amazing place to be from. And seeing the outpouring of support in our community reminds me of that. It is incredibly impressive that with all the challenges we have right now, as soon as it's needed, people open up their their homes, their wallets, their resources, whatever's needed to help their fellow community members. And so, yeah, it's a great reminder. This is a great place to be from. Last thing I would say is just a maybe a caution to all of us here on the Assembly that it's, we, we run for these seats because we want to help people solve their problems. But there's generally a process to be followed and giving excessive deference to squeaky wheels can sometimes negatively impact the ability for the borough staff to do higher priority tasks because they feel maybe an unintended pressure coming from the Assembly via the manager to complete a more, a more political ask. And so just, I would remind everyone, often, you know, being on the receiving end of that type of tasking, that, you know, we trust the manager to prioritize the work that needs to be done. And if we have a concern with that, we should address that with the manager. But, you know, trust that the staff is executing and prioritizing their workload the best they see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott.
No comment.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first off, I'd like to thank Mark. Mark, thanks for coming down and sharing your insights from June 0 and keeping us informed. You are a lifeline to what we are all working for up here and your insight is invaluable. So thank you very much for making the jaunt and please share with your family our appreciation for them to share your time away. Into the same likelihood, Luis and Gary for their representation of Kodiak. It's critical. It's a sustainment for Kodiak and this is a special time of year. When you come down and you give us these updates that we reflect upon those that are also in service to this community. So please extend our appreciation through your travels to with them as well. And thank you in advance for all of the help with the Kodiak Airport. Yeah, you butter them up first. So there, there are merits to comments that Assembly members made tonight, both two and four, and against the prioritization of requests. I can see both sides of the argument. However, in the extraordinary circumstances of this, I too support Mr. Whiteside's request for prioritization of of the Lily Drive project. This lends itself to what I feel is probably one of the more ambiguous hierarchical structures that the borough has with the involvements of service districts and how service districts are activated, how they're managed, how how tax dollars are spent. And so, again, I mentioned earlier, I look forward to diving into those contracts. It, I believe that it starts at the contractual level. So I look forward to diving into that. I'm gonna say one thing here. I've, I've received numerous, I would say, of all the complaints that I receive as a sitting Assembly member, one of the top three is the DMV tax. So I'm definitely looking forward to addressing the DMV tax in the coming yellow papers that I can fill out that can then occupy 75% of lists that doesn't get accomplished. So the last thing that I'll say is I was fortunate enough to be in Anchorage this week. I was also fortunate enough to be invited by some of the parents of the White Sands incident. A couple of them are avid paintballers. Those kids have a long road emotionally and physically. And I would ask the community to support that road to recovery, whatever that looks like. I have not done this as a sitting Assembly member to make my own plug. However, I'm going to now because the time is correct. We are hosting a fundraiser at the Outdoor Kodiak Paintball Field over the next two Saturdays. There was an initial $5,000 anonymous donation. We received a matching $5,000 donation. I received word today that we just have a $25,000 donation. This, this is going to be something that can help the families financially recover from this. So Saturdays, we'll be out there all day. It's free. We are working on a donation only. Volunteers will be out there to staff this. And it is because we've got to care for our children. This community is about the kids and we cannot lose perspective about that. So I will end on that note and thank you very much.
Nova, you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to, if it's okay to the Assembly, I would like to address the question posed by Assembly Member Whiteside and also Assembly Member Sharrett about adding or potentially directing the manager. If it's an action item and it needs to be added to maybe next week's meeting agenda, there's provisions in the code for that, which is in 2.30060. If I can read it, it says an item may be added to the agenda less than 16 days prior to a meeting, but before the meeting packet has been distributed. I will be distributing the packet on Monday. If the request to add the item is submitted by the mayor by two more or more Assembly members or by the manager and the other section to it is and is approved for addition by the mayor. So the mayor would have to add it to the agenda. The other way that you could have, if it's an action item that you're wanting to do, directing the manager, one other thing that you could do is if we have three Assembly members, you can call a special meeting, maybe next week. And then, or the deputy presiding officer, or I believe the manager is also allowed to call a special meeting. So those are your options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is Mayor's comments and thoughts go out to families involved in the White Sands incident. A lot of has been said about that tonight, so I won't expand anymore. But it's a long road for some of them, so thoughts will be with them on there. So with that, we're going to take a five minute break and go to the special meeting here and get set up for that. Thank you. Work session's adjourned at 8:49.